Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling, Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everybody, we're glad to hear today.
We are, we're so thrilled to have you here today. We also have Julie here from our team. What's up Julie?
Hello, how are you guys?
I'm fantastic. I hope you guys are too. Let me let us know where in the world you are. I'm in Providence, Rhode Island today. Very different background for me. I hope you guys are having a wonderful day wherever you are in the world. Let us know as you're coming into the chat. Which are excited to learn more about today. As you may know, if you get our emails, then we are, you know that we are talking about ChatGPT today. This is an enormous topic and I want you to oil up with courage or whatever your favorite oil for expansion or focus or don't freak out you need. And today we're going to be talking about a very specific use case for this really cool new technology. And it's going to be something that's actually very simple. And I think you're going to find this very exciting and freeing for you and it's going to fit into some things that you're probably already working on or may have found yourself stumped with. So get ready, get excited, turn off your distractions, get ready to take some notes. We're going to get into a brief set of slides here and then we are going to actually show you how we're going to get some of these things done with ChatGPT. And how you can actually plug them in to get oiling. Before we do that, let me open up the chat here. How's everybody doing? Where are you in the world? We got Arizona representing big time today. What's up you guys? We've got Tampa, we've got more Florida, we got, how is the, how's the tangerine Greg? Are you guys out from under the snow?
No, 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 it just snowed a bunch more this, you know, last couple days, but you know. Spring is around the corner supposedly.
Thoughts and prayers Greg, thoughts and prayers. Also, we got Vero Beach, we've got North Carolina, Orlando, Vermont. Awesome. We are so thrilled to have you. What's up NYC? That's where I normally am. Very cool. Alright, so we're going to pop out a video. We're going to get into ChatGPT and get oiling, get into these slides. And then we will come back and visit with you. We do have space for live work reviews today. If that's something you've signed up for, then we are so excited to work with you, but if you just are here and whether it has to do with today's topic or not, we are here to help you. So what we're going to get into today, of course, is what ChatGPT is first. You don't know what we're talking about, don't worry, we're going to get into it. We're going to talk about a couple of time-saving ways to use ChatGPT with Get Oiling. Some best practices for using it and I'll actually show you some of these things in live action using ChatGPT. And then we will actually go in and, and I'll show you how you can take what kind of responses you can get from ChatGPT and bring them over to Get Oiling to create cool things in your system, useful stuff in your system, very quick and easy. And of course, as always, we have live help and Q and A. So if you have questions or if you need help from us, please go ahead and add that to the Q and A. We have our incredible team here today, here to help you with whatever it is that you're working on in your good oiling system. And of course, if you are watching this as a replay and you want to be on one of these live calls, we're live every week at noon Eastern time and we are for all Team YL. If you have a question about running your business, if you want to get inspired, you want to meet some amazing people in the Teen Young Living community, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to be on the list, to get notified for when these calls are coming up, what we are talking about on them. And of course, get the Zoom link to join them live. You want to work together on a call like this one and you'd like to maybe schedule that in advance. You can go to getoiling.com/web site review and you will be able to pick a Thursday at noon in the future where you can work together with us in dedicated time on one of our live calls. And of course, if you are in the middle of working on all of this and you're just trying to get it all started and you need a hand getting things done, you can go to getoiling.com/concierge and work with our incredible team. Today we are talking about AI, but we have real human hands-on help that is available to you. If you go to this link and these are highly qualified professionals, very good at what they do and masters at using the good oiling system and setting it up exactly the way that you want it. So feel free to check out what's there, reach out to them, get a quote for whatever your dream project is. So I'm going to read this out to you here, just in case you can't read it here on this screen. But I actually asked ChatGPT to explain itself to you. And so what ChatGPT is, is a computer program designed to communicate with people using what they call natural language, right? So it's meant to really communicate with us as though it's a human. So it's a type of artificial intelligence that can understand and respond to human language, just like another human would. It's really fascinating. Maybe, let's just see a quick show of hands. If you're here on the call, have you tried this out yet? Have you created an account and gone in and played around with this? Really recommend that you give this a shot. It is absolutely fascinating technology and it is going to have enormous implications on the future of how we work. So definitely put on that if you can't beat them, join them hat, because this is going to be an important thing to get some degree of familiarity with. Because it's a part of how things are going to be moving forward, I believe personally. And it's just fascinating. So anyway, what we want to think about ChatGPT in the context of your business, we want to think about this as really just a, a really good assistant. Right? So somebody that you can go and ask questions, you want to have sort of a dialogue. It's really good at finding answers to things very quickly. Now it will tell you when you sign up that it's, it's not infallible. Right? It is something that could potentially in some cases produce results. It is something that is learning how to improve itself on a constant basis, but obviously this is not original source work, we'll say that, right? Like you're not going to create a scholarly article off of this, but you're going to have a pretty solid chance of getting a really great outcome, especially in the context of what you would be using it for as a young living brand partner, right? So it's going to do its best to provide you with advice on various topics. And in my experience, asking it the questions that would be relevant to you guys, again, in the context of how you would use it for your business, I've never seen it go wrong. You just need to give it the right information. So while it might seem complicated and guys, based on what this thing can do, it's enormously complicated. But using this is actually super simple. So you just type in your question and it'll actually respond typically within seconds, right? And, and of course you can use it on any device. So if you are on the go and you have an idea, you want to pull up some, some copy, right? So for your website, for a post or something like that, you can use this in any setting. So I actually asked ChatGPT to explain itself to someone who is tech averse, right? Or for someone who does not feel like they are an expert in utilizing technology, right? So this is actually a very sort of simple layperson's explanation. I could go in and ask ChatGPT to explain itself to a web developer or to a coder or to a marketer or whomever and, or to a student and it would explain itself quite differently. It's really fascinating stuff. So do make sure that you're playing around with this and I'm kind of getting to know how it works because it can save you so much time. We're going to go over some specific examples today and actually show you what that can look like and how you can implement these steps. So today we're going to be talking about really how you come up with copy or what to say. So this is basically using AI to support your copywriting on your website and your emails and in your funnels. You could also of course use this for social media posts and the like. So this is how we come up with what to say. If you ever have felt stuck when trying to figure out what the best words would be to use in different settings, this is going to be a phenomenal, phenomenal tool to help you. So one of the examples I'm going to show you today is to create a newsletter, specifically a young living newsletter that promotes the gift with purchase for this month. We're going to talk about how we can create email or text campaigns. And then also, and this is super cool because everyone should be creating content, use the good oiling blog for this. But what if you don't know what to write about? What if you don't feel like you are a strong writer? Well, this can kind of do it all for you with a couple of caveats that we'll get into. You can build funnels here as well. And then of course, in those funnels, that could be creating a lead magnet, you can have it right up, a giveaway, slides for a video, copy for a PDF, etc., a copy for a landing page to sell the PDF that it just wrote for you. Campaigns that move people toward a consult and obviously so much more that you can do with this. But we're going to get as far into this with examples as we can today, time permitting. So I want to talk about some best practices here and there's one that I don't have listed that I kind of want to just mention because it's really more speculation on my part. I do feel strongly about it and I do want to make sure that it's included, but let's get into just using it first, right? Like how to actually get the results out of it that you want. So first things first, you have to make sure, because this isn't actually a human, it's not going to read the context beyond your words. It's not, you know, taking your tone of voice or your body language into account, right? So you've got to be abundantly clear in the instruction that you give it. So if you're asking it to tell you something, to write something for you, etc., you've got to be really clear, right? Know that you can reword your inputs, right? You can actually edit what you told it so it can give you a better result based on what you're looking for. And I will show you how this works. You can use examples where necessary, right? So if you wanted it to write an article about five ways you can get better sleep with using essential oils such as lavender, that would be using an example, right? So I want to encourage them to use lavender or maybe you want to recommend a specific young living product. Write an article, write a 500, sorry, write a, the way I would word this would be something to the effect of, write an article, maybe in parentheses here, greater than 500 words or something like that, right? That explains five ways you can improve your sleep using essential oils with lavender, for example, or something like that, right? And then that way it won't just give you those five things, it will also include the example that you've requested. If you want specific outputs like what I mentioned, say you're writing a blog post and it's a thousand words and you think about writing a thousand words and you just turn into a deer in headlights, you can actually ask it to write a thousand words or more in the article and it'll do it. You can also, and this is, I learned this from Julie, who is an absolute wizard with this stuff, you can ask it for tone. Right? So we can say in a bright cheerful tone and it will write something for you in a bright cheerful tone, which is really cool, right? You could also say, writing this from the perspective of a mom, writing this from the perspective of a, insert whatever, you know, however you characterize yourself or your following does here as well. The next thing I want you to encourage you to do, and this is before you even really sit down to put anything in here is to be clear on what you want out of it, right? So if you are hoping to write a newsletter, then you want to know, like, you know, you basically want to know before you sit down roughly, how long do I want this to be? What kind of information do I want to include? Is there a call to action, right? We want to be clear on what the outcome is that we're looking for before we start asking it to do stuff. And then the more specific you are, the better context you give it, the better answers you're going to get. And then of course, in addition, open-ended questions, right? So don't ask it a yes or no question. If you're looking to generate copy, you want to ask something open-ended. And again, you're going to see some examples in live action here as well. Alright, so what we're going to get into is how we can create newsletters, how we can create campaigns, we can research, plan and create content, build funnels, including lead magnets, landing pages, campaigns and more. So we're going to get into that. And oh, and the quick thing that I wanted to share with you guys here before I, before I get into this. When you are creating copy, if it's email copy that's going to go out to your people, I think that it's fine for you to just simply use whatever it generates for you. If you're creating something that is going to live on a public facing page on your website, I would encourage you to make some modifications to the body of the work itself. The reason for this is it's twofold. Number one, it's really important for your people to hear your voice, right? We don't want you to be a vanilla robot on the internet and that's kind of what this is unless you make it your own. And the main reason why, and that's, that's a good reason, but the main reason why I want to encourage you of this, if you're going to be using this to create things like blog posts and content that you want to be discoverable using SEO, for instance. Obviously, the, the algorithms for how SEO works are always going to be opaque. That's proprietary information that the search engines own. So they're never going to come out and just say this to us. But there, if there isn't in place already, I believe strongly that there will eventually be in place some kind of technology, AI-based, that is able to recognize whether an article was created by AI and that that might not necessarily win you points when you're trying to rank in the search engines. Search engines have historically valued original content, right? And so you're going to want to try to make, if you're using this to create blog posts, for instance, and your goal is to rank in Google searches, for instance, or search engines, when somebody is searching a term, you want them to find your blog article. I believe you're going to have a better outcome long-term, the more unique your content is. So that is, that is my little mini TED Talk on that. So let's go ahead and get into our ChatGPT and I want to show you. I want to show you how you can get started with this. It's really, really, really fun and easy stuff, just to get started. And by the way, you're going to want to go to OpenAI. And, and that's where you can actually create an account. I created a free account. Let me pop out a video here. So the screen share is a little nicer. Okay, so I am in, okay, here we go. So this is the explanation that I asked it to give you. You can ask some other questions here. So I said, what are some prompts I can use to follow up with leads? If you just need ideas for how to, in just language that you could use when you are reaching out to somebody. This is obviously very generic. If I could go back here and I can say, right, did you see how I can edit this? What are some prompts I can use to follow up with leads? We'll say this is maybe after an event, think about the context. What are some prompts I can use to follow up with leads after a live event? Who I'd like to have schedule a free consult with me. Now it's going to recreate this. So now it's, it's actually giving the, giving you some very specific steps that you can follow, some reasons why you should do this. And of course, it's actually actively writing out an email that you could use, right? And you could just take this over to get oiling, maybe create a saved reply with this. So let me, here, I'm actually going to grab this copy here. So just drag it to copy it. Why is this not working on my computer? Here we go. Down here, it's best regards. Alright, so I'm going to copy this and let's go over here and create a saved reply. And this is something that you could simply use to follow up with somebody one-on-one. It's just a great example. We're going to call this follow-up after live event. And we're going to paste it. And obviously this is not the correct code for this. We're going to just replace that here. Right? And of course you would need to go in and change this out, right? So as you may have learned during the event we offer, right? And this is where you would be talking about whatever you shared at your event, the problem that you solve, it does give you sort of a framework to work with. So you would change this out and then of course, in the future, when you're ready to, to send this out, you can of course pop the saved reply into an email that you're sending out to a lead after an event, which is pretty cool. So that was just a quick one, but let's talk about how we can, how we can create. So how about we do, write an email about, let's see, to my customers promoting this month's Young Living Gift With Purchase. Now this is an important thing that I want you to see. So this isn't going to give us the most accurate results because it can't actually read websites, but check this out. Now see how it says it includes lavender, peppermint and lemon? We know that that's not. If we go to Young Living. Let me go over here, go to Young Living's homepage. I'm going to the US site. We know that this month's gift with purchase is tangerine, lemongrass, right? So I'm going to copy this and I want to ask it if it can see the information on this page. Can you see the accurate gifts with purchase for this month on this page? Now it's going to tell you what it can and can't do, right? So he can't browse the internet, but he can, he can tell that that's the official one, right? Can you rewrite the email above but feature the following products? As gifts with purchase and encourage the reader to go set up their loyalty order. Okay? And then we're going to put a colon here because we need to go back and what are our gifts with purchase? Our gifts with purchase are orange, tangerine, CBD soothe and mighty pro, right? So we're going to put in orange essential oil, tangerine, essential oil, CBD soothe and mighty pro. There we go. So it's never going to be 100% on the nose accurate because like it said, it's not able to actually go to and browse the web. But it does have a really great ability to provide you with a baseline, right? So when you have this, you're going to copy it. You're going to bring it over to, let me go over here. Pull this up. So you're going to copy this and then we're going to go over and again, we can create a saved reply. Or you could search for your filter for your, your newsletter folks in Young Living. I'm going to use a saved reply. This would be April gift with purchase. For this year, I'm going to paste. And now we have this, right? So you could go in and modify what's here. You could go in if you wanted to and, and create leaf links to your tangerine, your CBD soothe, mighty probe, orange, etc. Or you could simply link off to the gift with purchase page. You're obviously not going to be saying Young Living Customer Service Team, right? You're not going to have that here at all because you have your own signature that you set up under your contact settings. But you do now have the ability to just get out a really well-written email that you only need to make a couple of quick modifications to before you start sending. Which is pretty, pretty exciting. So let's talk about if you are somebody who is wanting to create content on your website. So filling out your blog with great content that can help people to see that you're someone that they should be following. And of course, someone that they should be taking recommendations from. So what I started with over here, you can actually see the whole thread. As I asked first, what are the most popular blogs for eco-conscious moms? So you can actually insert whatever your ideal person is here, but let's just say for the sake of this, of this demonstration here, you're looking for crunchy green mamas, right? And so one of the best things that you can do as a content creator is to see who's out there making content and what seems to be their most popular content, because that's going to tell you some of the keywords, some of the problems to solve. It's going to give you some inspiration, etc. So one of the first things you can absolutely do is ask, what are the most popular blogs for each eco-conscious moms, right? You could say for homeschool moms, right? You could say for, you know, for 20-somethings who want to be more financially literate, if that's your thing, right? You can look for this kind of information. So it's going to give you these, you can actually go and look them up, learn more about them. And of course, again, use those for inspiration. Now I asked it, if I were a blogger focused on reaching eco-conscious moms, what are some topics I might blog about? And then it gave me a great list of seven. Now I picked one of these and these are all fantastic, right? But the one that I picked was raising eco-conscious kids, which is inside of one of these, here we go, raising eco, eco-conscious kids. So under green parenting tips, here are different, you know, potential article topics, right? So I wanted to focus on raising eco-conscious kids. So then I asked it, please write a blog post greater than 1,000 words in a fun quirky tone focused on how to raise eco-conscious children. And look what it did. It gave us a nine, 10, 10-point blog post over a thousand words that you can use to create your blog post. So let's go see what this looks like. And I did actually also ask it to, to write an email to promote this, but let's just go ahead and copy this. I need to go from the bottom on this particular device to get everything that I want here. There we go. So I'm going to drag it up to copy and then we're going to go write a blog post. Super exciting. So copy. Let's go over to our blog. It's going to be right down here, the blog post. Now obviously, you're going to want to have followed some of our other training on blog posts and things like that so that you can actually plan out, have your, your images ready, etc. But let's go ahead and just get a draft done of this, right? So I'm going to paste what I got, right? So this is 10 tips for, oops, for raising eco-conscious children. Alright, so here's our number one. So we can actually go in and format this, right? So we'll say this is number one and we're going to change the formatting here. And of course, I'm not going to do this for the entire post, but you can kind of see how this would work. You could add an image here, right? Here's the next one, right? And the next one, so you, now you have all of the, the words are written for you, right? I would again, encourage you to go through here, look at how it's written, consider rewriting some of this in your own words. Obviously, including some of your own stories and anecdotes. Those are all going to be really helpful. But spinning this in your own words is going to be a really important thing for you to consider doing if you're using this to create a blog post. But it has done so much of the heavy lifting for you, right? We just got the idea for this blog post using AI in like 10 seconds or less. And we also have a base post from which to start and start using our own verbiage to make it our own. And then finally, what you want to do, once we have this ready to go, I'm going to go ahead and save this draft. Now obviously, if it were published or if we have the link, we want to publish it later. That's what we would want to do here. And actually, let me go ahead and do this just for the sake of this. We're going to publish it tomorrow. And pretend that I did everything that I'm supposed to do. So I'm going to schedule the post because now I'm going to have a link for it in my blog post that I can use in the email that I'm also going to schedule now. So I'm going to get link. That is, actually I'm going to come back and do that because I have one more thing I need to do. So let's head over here back to our ChatGPT screen and let's scroll down. And what we're going to ask is, please write an email in a fun quirky tone. Again, I'm using the same tone that I asked it to use in writing this blog post that encourages my subscribers to click a link to open and read the above post. So I'm asking it, you see the context that we're using here? I'm giving it specific directions. Please write an email to my subscribers that encourages them to click a link to open and read the post that it just wrote. So it's self-referential, it understands what is, is being asked here. And look at this, it even gets us a great subject line. Get your kids hooked on saving the planet, fun ways, ways to raise eco-conscious children. And it writes it all out for you and it actually gives you everything that you need to say to put into your email. So let's go and copy this and go create and schedule an email and get oiling to send out that blog post that we just created. How cool is this? Have you guys tried this kind of thing before? It's wild. Alright, so I'm going to go over to, I'm going to open messages in a new tab because I want to actually come back and grab this blog post link. So I'm going to create a new message. I'm going to create one message. I'm going to filter for my newsletter tag. I'm going to write an email. And of course, Jane doesn't have any subscribers, but that's fine. You do. So we're going to go over here and we're going to paste and I am pasting plain text. If you watched our, our tech tips and tricks video, then you know this, on a Mac, it's Command Option Shift V. Do check out that awesome training that we did, that's got a cheat sheet on these keyboard shortcuts. They save a ton of time. So here we go, get your kids hooked on saving the planet. There's our title, so I can delete that. I am also not going to say this because I actually want to speak to the, the person directly. So hello and So hello, and we're just going to highlight where we want to swap and pop in contact first name. If the code does something weird and enters for you, that's fine. You can just backspace. Okay, so here's. The copy, right? If you like it, this is fine. You could you could send it out, but what you need first. Is to add your blog post link. So let's go back over here, get link. Go to here and we are going to. Insert our link, I'm going to say. Read it now. Is going to be the the button copy. We're going to make it a link and paste our blog post link. Insert it and then you change the style. I'm going to make it a button. Alright, so now I'm going to schedule it. So if that blog post is dropping tomorrow. I'm going to have it also go out tomorrow. So schedule mail. And look at that, you're good to go. Your syndication is done. Could you repeat that four times? And have all of your blog posts done for the month? Right? And then you could maybe just take an extra ten minutes and go create a handful of cute canvas images that you go pop in. How much time would this save you? It's pretty, pretty cool, right? And the final thing that I want to show you guys that you can do, and this one is. This, this one kind of blew my mind because I had never actually done this before. I'm used to coming up with all copy out of my brain and on the, you know, just right, right away. Right there at that moment in time. And and obviously, that's something that can be time-consuming. And if you're not somebody who has been a copywriter for a long time like I have. Then this might be something that takes you ten times more time than it would take me, right? I was able to get this done in about ten minutes. And what I did is I created an entire funnel. And what I asked first, and this was really just a test, is I wanted it to write an article for me on how to create better habits. And this was actually very general. I would actually encourage you, encourage you to get even more specific with this. Again, thinking about who your ideal person is. If it's for moms, imagine, you know, writing how to create an article. For moms. On how to create better habits. You could write that in here and then this is going to be tailored a little differently. Maybe you can say how to write an article on how to create. Better habits for a mom who is having difficulty managing stress. And then it will write that for you, right? Get specific and you'll get really great results. So I saw this and I thought it was. That is pretty good, right? There's six tips. This is fine. And so I said, write landing page copy that offers the above article. So let's just say this is, I'm going to be using this for a lead magnet. This is going to go into a PDF or onto a page inside of get oiling. And so I said, write me a landing page that offers the copy or that offers this thing that it just wrote for me. And it did, it's giving the call to action so that they can download and read it. And then I I wanted something a little more specific. So there's an article, but now I asked, write me a guide. And it was still pretty similar, right? But it is. Written more from the perspective of a guide, right? Now write me landing page sales copy for the above guide. I want it to really sell this thing. Well, it did, right? And so this is what can go on your landing page. Finally, because a campaign needs to be attached so that people, you can actually collect the email and send people something. I said, write an email campaign about creating better habits that sells a free consult. So basically, after somebody says, yes, I want that thing, and then they get that thing, you also want to be offering them the next step. Because if somebody becomes a lead on your website, what do you want them to do? You want them to buy Young Living products, right? Well, the path for them to buy Young Living products is through you. So what needs to happen is is that that person needs to speak with you, right? And so here it is. It's written it for us. We're telling them to schedule your free console. So let's go and take what they have here and create a funnel. In it'll link, right? I'm going to show you not in complete detail because we don't have that much time. But let's go ahead and create this in the correct order of operations, beginning with with a campaign. So we'll create a campaign and this is just going to be a single email campaign. This is going to be. Habits guide. We're also going to call it habits guide here. That's what they're going to say. That's what they're going to see if they manage their. Their subscriptions with you. So now we can go in and create our message. It's already written for us. It's so cool. Let's go see down here. Here we go. So we're going to. Actually, I want all of this. Alright. So we're going to copy this. All of it. Go over to our message. Paste plain text. Let's put that up here in our subject line, which they are so generous to include. And of course, we do want to change the code here because name isn't going to get you what you want and get oiling. It needs to be. Contact first name and you don't have to remember that because you always have this dropdown to put these things in here. So here we go. And we also, of course, because we're not saying at our company, we can say I, right? I specialize in helping people. We might want to also go here and say I, because again, this isn't we for you probably, right? So that's why I'm excited. So you you see how you can actually go through and just pop in and change this slightly? Let's see. Right? So this is very, very straightforward, right? Just go on and make some modifications. Make sure it sounds like you. And then, of course, here we want to change this to my first name, voila. And of course, if you have a link to book with you. You can include that here as a hyperlink, right? So this might be a book of call. There we go. And of course, we can link that throughout here as well. So now we've got our campaign. Step one, create the email that's going to go out after they opt in. Step two, create the thing that they're going to get. Now, one thing that you could absolutely do is take the the copy that they've given us here for this guide. Go into Canva and make it really cute, like a multi-page PDF document. But what I actually did when I did this initially was I created a page and get oiling that this goes to. Which again is very simple. All you're going to do is go to your pages. And it actually is going to look very much like this one. Where I've got a title section and then I've got these sort of alternating image and text sections. And so the way that I did that was I created first under header. I created this one, this Excel header, right? It's just like this. I just changed the stuff out, right? And then for these additional section down here where I, again, you just go over here and copy this stuff that they've given you. Number one, right? Then go copy, paste. Number two, copy, paste, swap out your images and you've got the page done, right? That's what that will look like, right? But what I did to create these sections is to. Click this little plus under general. I either use this two column here or here. To create those. And so you can create, this would be a lead magnet for your funnel. So instead of sending them to. A PDF link, you could actually send them to a page on your website that has all of this information included. If you are using this option, do make sure that this is saved by link only or shared by link only. Because it is something that's only supposed to go out to people who've given their name and email first, right? Now, the final step that you're going to want to take, once you create a page like this one, utilizing the copy that they've provided. Is you're going to want to create some kind of a landing page that sells that so that you can grab that person's information. Get them what they're looking for and then, of course, ideally move them over as soon as possible to a call with you, which is the whole point of all of this, right? So let's use landing pages for this. You will, of course, want to utilize a nice image for this, but. But we're not going to worry about that too much at this point because it's provided us with a great deal of copy. I actually want to use this three-part form. As our, as our starting point. So you can actually see that we've got three places. Or really two where we can include a good amount of copy. So I'm going to hop over here back to our chat GPT and go to where we asked them to write landing page sales copy for the guide. So I'm going to put it here. Here's our first two paragraphs. I'm going to copy that. Head over here. And we're going to paste plain text. And I'm going to actually use this one as the headline. Here we go. I'm going to copy this. Delete. And I'm going to paste it here. Alright. Change the wording here, obviously, to whatever you want. And then come back over here and let's get the rest of it. So we'll put these two paragraphs in the next section. Right here. And then you obviously you can change the headline. You can utilize some of the copy that they've given you. And then, of course, grab this last part here for the call to action. Again, just real simple, copy, paste, add it over here, paste plain text, play around with it, get it to look like how you want. The whole point here is is that you don't have to think up every single word you need to use to create this. Now, once you've put this together, you're going to want to have it redirect after they have visited, after they've filled out the form. We can send them over to the page that you've created. And of course, you want to attach that campaign. And that was the guide. Let me find that here real quick. Here we go, the habits guide. Right? Then we'll, of course, want to tag this accordingly. So if they opt in, they're a lead or a lead who wants new habits, etc., right? So so that is really. That's as far as I think we should go this time because there's so much more that we can do with this. But I want to really encourage you to start opening your eyes to the ways that you can save yourself time. By allowing it to get just a framework in place that you can use as a jumping off point. See the ideas and the concepts that they put together in order, the way they organize the information. And then you can go in and make it your own, give it your own voice and save yourself so, so very much time. And and by the way, yeah, we we could get into hundreds of hours, I'm sure, of all of the different types of AI tools that are out there. I mean, there's literally an AI tool that you could use. You could tell it an idea of what you want and it can generate an image for you for your blog post if you want. Which is really, really cool and exciting. There's a lot that this can do, but I think the most important thing for you to know is that. A, you want to practice using this because the way that you ask questions, the specificity that you use. And even the order in which you include the requests do matter, right? So when that fun and quirky tone that I included, I got better results when I put in in a fun comma quirky tone. Because when I first put it in there as fun and quirky, it actually included fun and quirky in the words, which I didn't want. I wanted that to be the tone. So definitely start playing around with this because it is something that is learning, the more people are using it. So it's going to continue improving. But but the most important thing is is that you start improving on using it because you can start getting really great results. Like I've shared with you today, that can save you time on the things that can often take the most time for you, right? Coming up with what to say and the content that needs to live on your website. So I do have, let me pull up my calendar here real quick. And make sure that we've got everything we need here for. Actually. No, I think that was a cancellation. So if you are looking for live help, there is space here for you today. If you, I know the team has been. On top of all of the questions. If you guys have any requests, if you're here and would like to talk through anything, whether it has to do with this or not. Then please do feel free to put your request into the Q and A and we're happy to help you. I do see. Where did my attendee list go? Here we go. I see a hand up here. And for whatever reason, my zoom is being very strange right now. I thought I saw Suzie's hand up. Is is that still the case? Let me see. I don't know if it's going to allow me because it's doing a really strange thing. I can't actually see all of the attendees. Okay, yeah, if if you if you would like to have a walkthrough of of any of the stuff that we're talking about today. Maybe, I don't know, let us know in the chat that you want to come out to talk and then Greg or Julie, maybe you can allow them to come out. Because yes, my my zoom is being really weird right now. I can see three attendees in the attendees list and that's not how many people are here. Awesome. Or if you guys have something that you would like to try together, if there's something that you would like to see. This help you with, we can actually screen share and walk through how we can start with one question and actually evolve that into something else. So if you guys have an idea or project in mind, then of course, we can work on that together. And if you would like to come out and and talk through this, then by all means, let us know and we can bring you out to chat. We'd be happy to help. Let me see. I'm actually really interested to hear from anyone. If you're here today and you have created something on get oiling. Utilizing this technology would be very curious to hear what that looked like for you. And. I think that would give some some really great inspiration to folks who are here that this is perhaps a little bit more new for. Alright, let me grab the Q and A here. Can you help with my link button? Yeah, absolutely. Let me bring you out. I can actually see you're here. So thank you out to chat. Hi.
Hi, Ashley.
Hi, good to have you. So on your links page, you're you're looking for help with like like formatting the buttons?
Yeah, how do I make the buttons the same size? And I don't remember. I, because I added a new button and I don't remember how I got the other color, which sounds really embarrassing.
That's totally fine. Alright, so we're going to go, this is your links page. Let me make sure I'm actually sharing this because I'm not currently. There we go.
I know I have too many links on there after our marketing training, so I am going to fix that.
Okay.
But I just, but I don't know how to resize them.
Yeah, got you. Okay, so this is actually, it's it's a fairly simple fix, but it is something that you're going to need to repeat for each of the sections. One way that you may, why do I keep hitting the wrong button here? Hold on, sorry. Okay, we're going to click here to edit this or click edit, obviously. Okay. So let me see. Alright, so what we're going to do is we're going to edit the element styles. And so you're going to do this by clicking one button at a time. Right? So you have to make sure that you're highlighting the right thing, right? So now what we're going to do, remove all of my. On a much smaller screen this week. Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to scroll down here. Scroll. And we want the width, it's automatic right now, automatic to the 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 width of your text. We're going to go to a hundred percent. And you're going to do that for all of them. Take them all to a hundred percent. And so this means that they're all going to be the same size and they're all going to go the full width of the page. And obviously, this is something that's meant to be viewed on mobile. So and something that you're really only sharing like on Instagram, for instance. So yeah, so so this is. This is how you get that look. And so let's just go ahead and do all of them since we're here. But yeah, you just highlight the thing. And again, we're using this edit element styles right here, highlighting the button that you want. And widening it to what you want. Tell me about the color or the button style that you were. Hoping to adjust.
Color of that.
Most of them are, apart from the top ones. Got you, yeah. It's fine. Alright, so we we can see that there's like sort of a, I think this is our built-in pink one. And let's take a look here in this. Now we're actually going to use the edit content button. So when we click that, let's actually click this guy. And we know that this one, I believe, is set up as pink, right? But I don't know the name of the one that you have set up for these. So what we're going to want to do is save our progress here and then we're going to go to. I believe it's your colors and fonts page and we're going to scroll down. And huh, you don't actually have that preset.
Oh, okay, so. I can set my Canva branding. Color. I'm trying. So I didn't know if I could set that in there.
Yeah, yeah. So let's, oops, this is link. I'm looking for a link here. So let's go over here. I mean, there is a way that we can just figure it out from the page. But what we need to do for that is here, let me actually just. Want to focus on, well, it's one whole section. So I'm going to go down here and look at your code view. And this is. Okay, the majority of these. I believe. You don't remember how you did this?
No.
Here's, here's what you would do. Alright, so I'm I'm going to tell you the the easier way to do this because I I could, this would probably take me. Way too long to to, because I'm not a code person. So what I would encourage you to do. So what I would encourage you to do is um from Canva. Go into um. Go into your Canva, grab the code. Color code for the button or better have like two browser windows open, right? So that you can see the color on your screen. And when you click this background color, go to edit the pink one, because this is going to change the one that you want to change on your page anyway. So click this, go to show colors. And then use your eyedropper tool, or if you are a um. If you're on um a P C, uh it's going to give you other options as well. There may be like a copy paste option, another option here would be to go to wherever it gives you an input, right? Where you can actually um paste in that color code that you get from Canva and then that'll actually give you the correct one. Save it and then all of your pink buttons on your website are going to have that correct color from your brand palette.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah, and and if you save that as a preset, you don't have to go and manually change that moving forward. So I would definitely go and set up your custom colors on your site. Maybe you want to have a section that's that color um on your other pages. Um, so if you add all of those colors in from your palette on that page that I just showed you. Um, you're going to have a much easier time designing things for sure.
Okay, thank you so much for that help.
Absolutely, thanks for coming up. Okay, let me see, Camelia, it, it's a subject or topic and is it something we can put our name to? Camelia, I'm not a hundred percent clear on um on what you're asking here. Um. Would you be able to um give me some more information about um the, the question that you have in the Q and A here? And I'm happy uh to help figure that out with you. Uh Carolyn says my website is created for you, would like to see what it comes up. Um, comes up for women forty to seventy-five who want to age with health and grace. Love it, okay, um let's. Let's look at that, all right, so created for you, let's go share screen and look at Carolyn's website and um. And let's come up with some content ideas. All right, make the second half of your life the best half of your life. I love all of this, this is so good. Okay, um. A radiance coach. Oh, this is so lovely. Okay, so like to see what it comes up with for women forty to seventy-five years old who want to, okay, so. The first thing that maybe we ought to ask. And let's actually take a quick look at how we asked this string of questions already, right? So what are the most popular blogs uh for women forty to seventy-five who want to age with health and grace? So let's go see with just what that comes up with, right? So what are the most popular blogs? For? Um, let's see. Let's see, we're, we're going to change this just a little bit. Uh forty to seventy-five years old. Who are. Health conscious. And interested in graceful aging. There you go, so here are some. Fantastic options that you can take a look at for some uh. Some inspiration, some folks who are already out there doing this. So there's just a few examples that they've provided. Now, what is the next question that I asked here? Let me scroll back up. So now we've got that, so if I were a blogger focused on, so let's go back here. Move this around. All right, let's copy that. All right, so let's say. If I were a blogger. Focused on. What are some topics? Uh what are some of the best topics? To write about? See how specific we are. If I were a blogger focused on women forty to seventy-five, health conscious, interesting, graceful aging, what are the some of the best topics to write about? And it is going to give us a bunch, so let's. Find one of these things. That we can use as a starting point. Oh, there's so many good things here, right? Uh so all of these are things that you could absolutely touch on, uh but let's maybe talk about, let's see. Maybe. Skincare routines for women over forty. So. How did we ask this before? Let's use our example. Scroll back up here. I said. Please write a blog post, I'm just going to copy this. Um. And we're not going to use fun and quirky unless you are fun and quirky, so let's come back over here. And let's paste in our original question. Please write a blog post greater than a thousand words. In a. Warm tone, a warm friendly tone. Focused on. And how would we, let's see, that was going to be focused on. Uh that was skincare. Routines for women over forty. And now it will generate this. And now this is going to give you a blog post greater than a thousand words. Because in the, in the neighborhood of a thousand words is what the search engines really love. Uh and what they see as quality content. So here we go, you've got a blog post here. And then once it is done generating that, we can ask it to, please write us an email to our subscribers promoting. This blog post so that you have an email ready to send out to your people. Pretty, pretty cool, right? I am absolutely in love with this as a baseline. Um, for you to. Get those creative juices flowing. Awesome, so here you go. I hope that you use this, I hope you follow this because I think this is going to save you loads and loads and loads. Of time, check that out. Okay, so obviously it's going to keep going. Okay, here we go. Now finally, we can say, uh please. Write an email to my subscribers. Promoting. The blog post above. Encouraging them to click a link to read it. You see how we're being specific here? I think, um and I, I think I saw in the um. In the chat is that there was maybe a little bit of a question about um, how do we know what to ask? Or do you want a list of the things that I'm asking? I think the best way to think about this is um if you were actually delegating to an employee, if you had an assistant. Who obviously doesn't necessarily have the same degree of expertise as you do. You want to be very clear in the instructions that you give if you want to get a great result. Um, so I would consider maybe. Putting that hat on as a sort of a, you know, a leader, a boss. Um and asking an assistant uh to perform a task for you, right? So just think through all of the clarity, don't assume that it knows anything necessarily. Um about what you're going to do, you want to be very clear about it, so. Um, so we give them this instruction, we want them to click a link to read the blog post. And then, of course, after we do this. Um, we can also ask it to create a social media post that encourages them to click the link in bio. That um that contains uh this blog post, right? So there you go, there's so much we can do with this. Um, things that are created with this technology used as edited, considered our own copy. Um, you know, that's a really interesting question, Camelia, I do not know. Um, what the um, the sort of work product legal rules, things like that are. I do know uh that uh that right now this is being used. And this technology generally has been used to some degree for a long time for generating content. Um, I would definitely, if you're, if you have concerns about legalities. Um, I, I would definitely do some independent research and checking in uh with experts um in that lane, but that said, um. In any case, if you are directly citing someone else's work, and this is obviously, this is a robot, it's artificial intelligence. Um, if you are directly citing someone else's work, you do want to cite your work, right? It's just an ethical thing to do. Uh but I, I would, I would maybe do a little bit more digging into this if that's a specific concern of yours. But in any case, make it your own, especially if it's a blog post, if it's an email that is generated for you. I mean, it's just going to your subscribers, right? Okay, let me get out of share here. Uh Cheryl said would love any feedback about using a tips newsletter with chat G P T. I have a lot of topics to include weekly, but not sure how to narrow it down into less topics. Also any feedback on how to structure the newsletter to ask chat G P T how to create a weekly newsletter that's not time intensive. Hmm, okay, Cheryl, can, I wonder if this will actually let me see people in here. I would like to bring you out and talk with you about this, because you raise your hand for me if you are able to talk. I think we can take just a couple of minutes to. To see if we can get some clarity on this. Hi, can you hear us? Hi, good to have you. Awesome, so can you tell me about the, the tips newsletter and kind of what your, your thinking is for this?
Um. So uh. For more for people that are either prospects or just. They don't want to take the time to come to a class, but they are just. Kind of window shopping, so I mean, anything like oil of the week, uh like a nutritional product of the week. Emotional oil, starter kit oil of the week, personal care product, these are my brand topics.
Okay.
Uh like, and then a tip, why quality matters, favorite massage technique and then like. A little, like a mini self-care routine, so it's a lot, but um. I don't have to like rotate it or swap it out each week or something, but just to kind of create a template. Uh save replies so I can easily do a newsletter every week.
Okay, okay, uh so. Yeah, so the first thing that I would do is have. A um, have some kind of, and I talked about this uh in a very recent training on newsletters. Um. But what I would do first is have a document, like a master document that you're using, this could be a Trello board, it could be. A um, it could be a spreadsheet. Um, where you are populating the list of all of the things, right? So that you know if it's done or not, you know it's something that's in the pipeline. Um, et cetera, so first have a list of here's all the stuff that I know that I want to cover. And of course, if it's a running list, you could continue adding to it. So first do that. Um, second, create a saved reply. And get oiling, and so that way you've got your format for how you want it to show up, any links that you're going to send every time. Uh so that you, again, you have that design starting point that's going to be consistent every single time. And then what you're going to want to do. Is um if this is something that's intended for broadcast on a weekly basis, uh then of course you can go in, just ask chat G P T to. Um, you know, to specifically talk about the benefits of using Young Living's tangerine oil, for instance. Uh and it will do that and it's awesome. Um, or you know, tell me the benefits of Mighty Pro and it does, and it's awesome. If you want to know about, like you can tell it, tell me about Young Living's Mighty Pro. Um, from the perspective of a mom with young kids. It will do that, so um. So, so what I would do is maybe think about, you know, if you're kind of thinking about batching your work. Is to do that and run that uh sort of with chat T P T, just have a session where you're like. Tell me about this from this perspective, tell me about this from this perspective. And then copy and paste that into your organizational documents so that you've always got it, right? Or you could just complete the entire task whenever you want to. I would do it in um. I, I, I would do it in that block fashion where if you have a list, just go ahead, if you've got twenty things in the list. Ask the twenty questions to chat G P T, copy paste it over. Because there are some times when like usage is really high that you might not be able to log in. I've heard of that happening.
It has happened to me, yeah. Okay, great, thank, really helpful, so on Trello, just set up one board with a bunch of columns in the topics. And start putting some like graphics and like just a phrase or something of what I'm thinking about. And then when, and then create the save reply that I'm going to be using every week. And get oiling, okay, and then, and then each week just pull from the, those topics. Create and chat G P T the words and then um just put it into the saved reply.
Yeah, yeah, and one more thing maybe consider doing. Um, because something like what we're talking about here, these tips. Really would be good for you to be able to use them over and over again. Right? Uh, this would be just as helpful to the people who showed up to a class as it would for your people who are. Your customers, right? So. I would like, I would have the next order there to be to, obviously you have a saved reply that is your template for everything you create. But use it to create a save reply for each of these things. Because if you wanted to build a campaign of five different tips. Then you've already got those written, the pictures are already made, you did the work once, like why just do it once to just broadcast a message one time? Have that as an asset that you can drop into future campaigns, use next year, use three years from now, et cetera. Um, you don't have to just make it and use it once.
Could you give me an example, like if I have somebody in a class and you're saying they're asking for a specific product or specific tip? You're saying keep an individual save replies? And then draw on that.
Mm-hmm, because you can build them into other things, so think about this, for instance, if you've got, if you know that you're going to create a tip for these twenty different products. You're going to have twenty saved replies, but maybe one of those products is in a gift with purchase five months from now. You have a saved reply, you can just drop into your net, your newsletter that month. It's already got like a picture and the copy and the link and all of that stuff already done.
Ah, okay, okay, yes, if I'm, if I'm doing routines, like if I have a skincare routine, then just. Uh label it, save, save, label the save reply as skincare routine. And then that's, that's my template and I have to recreate that. Okay, Ashley, you're awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you, uh the, um, the other thing I would definitely do if you're going to be create, if you're going to be following what I just said and you're using saved replies for this purchase. Uh for this uh purpose is you're going to want to put. Just so you have keywords to search for and get oiling, if you're focusing on a topic, maybe put that in the name of the safe reply as well. Uh, so if it is about orange oil, you can actually search for your safe replies for orange and you know, you can just drop that right in. Instead of saying like, well, what did I put in that skincare one, right? Does that make sense?
Perfect, yes, appreciate it so much.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for coming out and great question. I hope you guys uh wrote down that idea because it's a really good one. Have it teach you uh or have it rather do the thinking for you and the writing for you. Um, to present and sell Young Living products, so gosh, there's so many things that we can do together with this. Um, I do see one new question here, I have a health spa in Ontario, presently have a website created through Wix. I see there's possibility to create info cages on get oiling. Um. Where clients can not only shop Young Living, but also my spa services. Yes, uh Valentina, you can sell anything on your Good Living website, really. Um, just like you can on Wix or anywhere else that you could have a website where you can take payment. Or send people to places like Young Living uh where the, the payment can be processed there. Uh, so definitely recommend if you have any specific questions or you need help with anything. Um, definitely take advantage of some of the links that we shared at the top of the call. Uh, we can ob- obviously get on a call like this one together. Uh and and talk through any of your ideas, or if you'd like to work with our concierge team to get some of those things built out, we're here to help, so. Um, thanks for coming out and for that question. So you guys really appreciate, really appreciate all of your questions today. I know that there's us, this, this opens up uh just Pandora's box of questions, I think for a lot of us, I know it does for me. Uh, look forward to more of this, if you would like to learn more about this, do more of this together, let us know. Tell us what you're interested in trying out, like Cheryl did, that was a really cool idea. Uh, and um, you know, we, we can walk through any of these things together. So encourage you to talk to our team, let us know in our Facebook group. Uh, and of course, uh come back here, we're here every week noon on Thursdays. To help you grow your own living business by working smarter, not harder. And letting now artificial intelligence do some of the work for you. It's really cool, awesome, well, we appreciate you guys and we'll be back here same time next week. Have a great week, everybody.